The Rotary Club of Cupertino presents the Cupertino Candidates Forum, featuring the six candidates vying for two seats on the Cupertino City Council.
Ready? Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the 2007 City Council Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Rotary Club of Cupertino. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Cupertino for making it possible to broadcast this to you live and also in the future and also as a webcast. It's a great partnership that we have with the city and it really helps to get the message out about this important election. I'm sure you're all eager to hear from our candidates, but as they used to say on TV, "First a word from our sponsor." I'm gonna take this opportunity to talk just a minute about Rotary. So what is Rotary? A lot of people out there may not know what Rotary is. We're the largest service organization in the world. There are 1.2 million members around the world in 160 countries, all of them dedicated to our motto, which is "Service Above Self." We do a lot of projects, both domestically and internationally. Your Rotary Club here in Cupertino is especially active. Just last year, we had 23 community service projects here in the community. We also had 20 international projects in 10 different countries all around the world, ranging from Africa to China to South America to Mexico and other countries as well. We raised $150,000 to do our charitable work in the community, and that's thanks to a lot of people here that either worked on those projects or attended those events. So some of the key events were the Fall Festival that was recently held, the crab feed that we do every year, and the Rotary Golf Tournament. That provides the money to let us go do all those good works. In case you can't tell, I'm pretty enthused about all that we do here in Rotary. But now on with the show. We do have six candidates for you today, and I'm gonna introduce them alphabetically, even though they're not sitting here alphabetically. We have Raj Abianker, Barry Chang, Albert Chu, Mark Santoro, Chris Wang, and Gilbert Wong. I want to now turn it over to our longstanding moderator for these events, former mayor, past president of Rotary, and all-around good guy, Phil Johnson.
Well, welcome, everybody. I'm glad to be here again. Friendly crowd, I want to assure the candidates, and this will be over with before you know it. We have six excellent candidates. It's always great to be in Cupertino where we have such a great outpouring of support of people that want to get involved, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy the next 45 minutes. If you have questions, I'd love to get them. And Cecilia and Jara, if you would both stand, they'll be wandering around, and I've already gotten about a half a dozen questions, but it would be great to get more. We're gonna start out today with one question that will be addressed to all candidates, and I have previously asked them to think about this, but the first lead-off question will be, "What would you like to see as one of your major accomplishments at the end of your first four-year term?" And I'm going to ask Chris Wang to lead off, and I would ask each candidate to limit their response to one minute. Chris?
All right. Good afternoon, my Rotary and community friends. I'm very glad to see you here, especially in this format. I talk and you listen. And like I re-liked it, I would like to seeking a traffic calming solution, and I would also like to continue on the environmental sustainability project, especially in businesses. If we can create a win-win situation for our greener businesses that will benefit everybody, and I'd also like to represent the underserved people, such as senior folks, and either low-income people or people that need help with. So I think we have a lot to improve. We have a great city, but let's work together and we'll get a better city for everybody and we'll all live in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Gilbert, we're gonna go with you and then work our way down the line, just to let everybody have an advance warning. Gilbert?
No problem. Thank you very much for having me here today. Cupertino is famous for our schools, and there's a lot of things that we can do after school, and I think that Cupertino needs to build a sports complex for our residents. We have soccer, we have cricket, we have baseball, but we don't have enough space for all of these competing sports. So one thing that I want to do is a public-private collaboration to provide this. Second, Cupertino needs to bring more sales tax dollars to Cupertino. Sales tax dollars provide infrastructures as well as neighborhood services for our residents. I want to bring a bookstore like Barnes &amp; Noble. I want to bring a office store like Staples or a home improvement store like Lowe's. We need those sales tax dollars for our community. When I moved to Cupertino, I wasn't married yet, and one of the things I like about Cupertino is our open space and our beautiful hillsides. When I'm on City Council, I want to complete the Stevens Creek Trail, a trail that is gonna be used by everyone, a multi-purpose trail where we can walk and bike in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. Raj?
Yeah, so you asked about the accomplishments that I'd be most proud of after four years. First and the most important to me is that we create a model city for the future. Model city in terms of sustainability and the environment, one that we use green roofs or where we actually build sustainability into everything we approve and do, from the kind of air we breathe and the pollution controls that we enforce in our neighboring lands, to the kinds of lights we use to drive future generations to have the kind of earth that we all deserve. So that's the first thing I'd be very proud of. We should enforce and develop building codes and a green earth for the future. The second thing that I would be most proud of is to be extremely proactive in getting the kinds of businesses that all residents can enjoy. On my websites today, I've identified different regions of the city where I think we could benefit from certain kinds of businesses, from a pharmacy near Valco to a coffee shop might be good down near the post office, and identify these businesses and proactively work to actually with the businesses to bring them to Cupertino, and then introduce and facilitate introductions to private landowners. The third is to bring diverse cultures together and create community events that cater across ethnic boundaries so that we all can participate and benefit from the diversity that we have and avoid supporting events that are isolationist and segregationist in their nature because they don't cater to the entire city. So I think we need to develop a set of events that will bring our diverse cultures together rather than drive us apart. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Raj. Barry, what would you like to see as your major accomplishment?
Sure, Phil. Good afternoon. My name is Barry Chang. I want to thank for watching this forum. I also want to thank Rotary Club for hosting this event and give us the free lunch. I was first elected to Cupertino School Board in 1995 and was re-elected in 1999 with the highest number of votes, and I'm very honored to serve Cupertino community for eight years, and I'm very proud of my many, many accomplishments. In the past few years, our planning commission and City Council repeatedly approved many projects, condo projects, without the proper consideration of its negative impact on our school and traffic. Cupertino voters spoke loudly last year by defeating Mayor DNE with almost 2/3 majority votes. It is time to listen to the voice of the people. When elected, I would like to expand library hours, reduce traffic around schools, and expand July 4th celebration, also reduce fee for our seniors. If you want more information, please visit my website at barrychang.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Santoro. Thank you for having me. What would I like to see as my most significant accomplishment? I think a lot of politicians like to build monuments. They're nice to look back at, a library, a bridge, a park, a dam, depending on where you live. I think these things are wonderful and they're nice to have, but what I would like to see happen in my four years is to see when I leave a city where the citizens feel that they're more a part of the government. And I'd also like to see a government that is informing its citizens and is working for the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we'll wrap this question up with Albert.
As everybody knows, I'm the kind of newcomer to this political scenes. What I want to see, you know, going back, looking at my four years, is basically very simple. What I want to see is, as a City Council member, we want to make sure nothing, you know, critical horrific events such as a veneer attack, collar bind situation happening to our school. That's basically what my goal and vision is gonna be. I do not want any such events happening anywhere close to Cupertino. If I can do anything to stop that, that's gonna be what my achievement gonna be for the four years. We want to provide the school with better training and preparation, of course. That's the main key. With the safety, you know, with the safety aspect all, you know, achieved, that will go a long way to build a city. The city will grow. If the schools are safe, the residents are safe, the city will grow. So that's what I want to be known for. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Thank you all for being brief with your responses. I appreciate that. So now, we have a question from the audience, and we're gonna have a variety of different questions today, and I'm gonna ask one question of all six candidates, and I'm gonna ask for a yes or no answer. I know that's gonna be difficult. And I'll let you weasel a little if you want to say maybe, but I'm looking for a yes, no, or maybe answer. A question from the audience. Do you support Hanson Cement's plans to expand? Gilbert Wong, I'll start with you. Yes, no?
You can't answer that yes or no. You have to give some explanation on that. Just give me one minute to explain.
No, no, no. Yes or no?
Yes or no? I accept status quo.
Okay. Chris?
Not exactly the way that is, no.
Okay. Raj?
No, not exactly the way it is now. And quite frankly, not at all.
Okay. Thank you, Raj. Barry?
No, because they voted no already, so I was the only candidate spoke at the State Board Mining Public Hearing.
Okay. Mark?
No.
Thank you, Mark. And Albert?
Just no.
No, okay. Well, thank you all for doing it, for restricting yourself to that.
What's your answer, Phil?
I'll tell you later. Okay, in order to get through as many questions as possible, I'm not going to always look for six people to answer the same question. So I'm gonna ask the first three candidates to answer this question, and then I'll ask the second three another question. So the first question that I'll ask Raj, Chris, and Gilbert to answer is a question from the audience. "What are your commitments to protecting the hillsides?" And if you could be brief, please. So, Chris, you're the incumbent. I'll start with you. The question is, "What are your commitments to protecting the hillsides?"
Okay, the council have just reviewed it. We actually spent quite a long time reviewing the hillside, and we're very happy to share that we have removed the overlay. However, the hillside, especially the big slope, like 30%, especially, anywhere from 15% up to 30%, I think we need to have some kind of protection.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Gilbert?
I'm very proud to have the endorsement of the Sierra Club and the California League of Conservation Voters. Hillside and open space has been very important to me. As Mayor Wang said, that we just had an application that was in front of us regarding that general plan that we wanted to protect our hillside and open space. If we're gonna do that, I think that should be applied citywide. It should not be applied to a small portion of our city, and I was deeply concerned that when it was applied to 15 properties, that I felt it was very unfair and it was spot zoning. I think that the correct way to protect our hillside is to do it citywide, have a public hearing. It would be hard to get consensus, but if we can collaborate with the Sierra Club, with the League of Conservation Voters, with the residents, and find a win-win situation instead of having our community divided, that is a better way to go.
Okay. Thank you, Gilbert. Raj?
I think we should preserve our hillsides, and we should limit the kind of construction that we have there, and I'm firmly for making sure our open space is preserved but also accessible. It's important for people to be able to get there and be able to enjoy that space, so the building of trails and accessibility is important.
Thank you. I have a new question from the audience, and this will be for Barry, Mark, and Albert, and the question is, "What change, if any, would you advocate for the police coverage that we currently have for Cupertino? In other words, are there any areas that need to be emphasized more than others?" Barry, I'll start with you.
Okay. I served four years on the Public Safety Commission, so I worked with our sheriff and the fire department. I know they did a fantastic job, and I wouldn't change it. I would still hire the contract with the sheriff department, and also, I also got a couple of tickets in the past 22 years from the sheriff department, so I know they've done a fantastic job. I wouldn't do anything changing. Thank you.
Okay, Mark. I won't ask how many people have received tickets in Cupertino. Mark?
Well, I haven't gotten one yet, but I better be careful how I answer this question when I'm driving home, I guess. No, I've heard some people call into question whether or not we should outsource our services, and all I can say is my experience has been very good. I've seen very good responses, and people that have needed the help, my understanding, have gotten very good help. My dealings with the law enforcement in the city have been excellent. I've seen them around and doing things. They've come by and asked questions about things, looking about concerns in the neighborhood, and I think they've gone a long way to look out for the neighborhoods and things. The only thing I might think about changing, there's a traffic congestion issue around the schools, and a couple neighbors have suggested that perhaps part of the problem is people not obeying the traffic laws, and perhaps we might want to concentrate a little more on that, maybe a day a week or something, to try to help the traffic move around the schools a bit. But from a safety and stuff point of view, I've been very happy.
Perfect. Thank you. Albert?
There's a couple of improvement I was recommending for quite a while. I wanted to look at the possibility of having like officer on bikes, patrolling the neighborhood, talking to the businesses, talking to the kids on the streets and so forth. We need to connect better during the, you know, rather than just driving the patrol car and trying to hit the emergency area. And there's a cellphone hotspot that I was aware of that, you know, considering the emergency communication, we need to fix that. If there's a cellphone that's on, you know, we need to fix, and, because we need the emergency communication from that area. So, that's just my...
Perfect. Thank you very much. Probably an unfair question to ask everybody when the commander's sitting in the audience, front and center. Next question for all of you, and if you would be brief in your response. "The city has been developing a plan to build a pedestrian bridge over Interstate 280. Do you support the idea?" And we'll start at the other end of the table. Albert, we'll start with you.
Is this a yes or no?
Do you support the plan to build a pedestrian bridge over Interstate 280?
The way I would look at that situation is, I gotta, you know, basically, I gotta do the research. I haven't studied the concept, the trade-off. We gotta have a study done that tells you what kind of traffic is gonna be used, or what kind of value are you getting out of the walkway. So I'll make a decision based on what I review, based on my research.
Thank you, Albert. Mark?
There's a couple of projects the city's proposing that, when I first became aware of them, on the surface, sound like very good projects, but a couple of them left a little nagging thing in the back of my mind, and this is one of them. I'm not sure exactly where I stand, but I definitely want to learn more about it. I'm a little bit concerned about the cost overruns. Well, I'm very concerned about it, and I'm also concerned about actually how many people will use the bridge. If two people a day use the bridge, it's obviously the wrong thing to do and a waste of our money. If 2,000 people a day use the bridge, then it's clearly a good thing and a good use of our money. So I'd like to see a little more information about, I've heard some numbers tossed around, but I'd like to know if we really know how many people are gonna use it and if it is a wise use of our money. It's fairly expensive, and we should be fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Mark. Barry?
I will, but it's subject to, if we can afford it. Depends on the price. I know the price tag is keep going up, and also the usage. If this project coming in place, I'll be the best candidate to overseeing it. I have civil engineering license and also master degree in civil engineering, and when I was on Cupertino School Board, we overseen Major A and Major C, both two projects, successfully finished on time within the budget. You know, my former colleague Pearl Chang and Joe Lucy can attest, we've done a great, fantastic job. So if you need someone to oversee the project, I would be the best candidate. Thank you.
Always be careful what you ask for. Raj, your turn.
So I, you know, I think accessibility and walking is best for our city, so to the extent we can encourage more people to walk through this bridge, that's a great thing. The costs I've heard now are the millions of dollars to build this bridge. I don't know too many Cupertino people live on the other side of the bridge. It's more Sunnyvale. So if I look at a city of Cupertino, where can we benefit most? I think there are opportunities for us to make our parks more accessible, trails where we can get neighbors to walk through the residences where most people live, and if we can focus on those things, I think that's generally a better use of money. But that aside, I would need to agree with some of the other people in that I would need to study it a bit more.
Thank you, Raj. Chris?
All right. Generally speaking, I think the Mary Avenue Bridge is a good project, and it's really creates the accessibility, and it benefits a lot of people, not just in Cupertino but regionally, from other cities. That's why we got the VTA grant to support this project. However, everybody mentioned about the cost, and Cupertino is not such a large city that our budget is about $50,000, $60,000 a year, so the cost is really something that we need to review carefully. Give it example, library, the council were so hard funding that quarter, nearly quarter million dollars to open the seven days, just to tell you how hard it is that we get the money together to do one project, and in Cupertino, we have so many projects waiting for the funding to accomplish. So I guess I won't have a straight answer at this point, however, when the bid comes in in November, we will know, and we will make decision, the tough decision, the city council will make that.
Good. Thank you. Gilbert?
Thank you. Yes, I also support the Mary Avenue Bridge, and the reason why I support it is investing in our future, just like we invested in our library, and we also invested here in our community center that we're sitting in here today, and it's a beautiful community center. It's taking opportunities, taking chances, and one of the platforms I'm running is for a bikeable, walkable community. And yes, there are residents who live on the north side of 280. The reason why is because I also live on the north side of 280. When that bridge is built, and when that bridge is built fiscally conservatively, I can take my daughter Allison and my daughter Emily, and we can bike to Memorial Park. My $300 really likes Memorial Park because of the ducks there, and also we have a large high school population that lives over in Homestead High School that can also walk or bike to the Oak Shopping Center. Oak Shopping Center is a gem that we have here in Cupertino that needs people to shop, and I think that the high school student population as well as the residents who live north of the bridge, as well as Sunnyvale residents can come. Now, are there other funding mechanisms that we can help to support this bridge? Yes. Sunnyvale has to come up to the plate. Sunnyville, we have to go together to the Sunnyville City Council as with administration and ask them that they need to come up with their fair share as well, too. Also, the Fremont Union High School District, how can we ask them to help us well, too, because they will have benefits as well, too. So let's look at grants, let's look at collaboration with other agencies, and let's work together to get this bridge built. This bridge can be a landmark for Cupertino.
Thank you, Gilbert. Thank you for all those answers. Questions are gonna get a little tougher, so I'm gonna ask a housing question of Gilbert, Chris, and Raj, and then I'm going to ask a traffic question of Barry, Mark, and Albert, and I'm gonna lead off with a housing question. If Apple, as most of you are aware, there is a requirement from the state to have a jobs-housing balance in the community, in every community in California, and Apple, of course, is talking about a major campus expansion. If that goes through, how would you mitigate and where would you put the housing that would be required in Cupertino? Gilbert, I'll start with you.
I'm always the first one. I don't know why. My platform is that we should have a balanced and managed growth for Cupertino. We definitely don't want to build in our one single-family neighborhoods. We don't want to build in our open space or in our hillsides. So where are we gonna build? It's definitely gonna be on our major thoroughfares, on Deans, on Wolf Road, on Homestead Road, and it's gonna have some critical mass. And the reason why is that I strongly support public transportation, maybe a rapid bus transit, maybe a light rail. We have to figure out a way to get people out of their cars. We want to reduce our carbon footprint. My other concern is that as we build more office buildings here in Cupertino, and I'm very happy that Apple decided to stay here, is that we also have to take consideration sustainability regarding water conservation, that as we build more homes and build more office buildings, where is the water coming from? And I want to work together with different agencies to figure that out. So there's no one question to fit everything, but again, we have to address the ABAC question, we have to address our general plan, and working together with our residents, we can figure that out.
Thank you, Gilbert. Chris, where would you put the housing?
Four years ago, when I first ran the first term City Council, my slogan was to make Cupertino smart growth, and now, four years later, my slogan's still smart growth. However, how do we define the smart? My smart definition is that we not only provide housing, but we also look at the issue around. We be able to afford the traffic, we be able to afford the traffic, the school crowdedness, we be able to afford the air pollution. All in all, the police, this public safety, all those issues that is the council's job to address before we approve any housing. We're talking about ABAC issue. Yes, ABAC have allocation. I think we're, Cupertino right now is doing pretty well on top of that. The new formula really reduced quite a lot of those allocation that we are meeting those. We're talking about Apple is gonna to build a second campus, which is gonna bring a lot of employees into the Cupertino. That's a good thing, but my collection is Apple have not started, and they're probably not gonna start until three years later, which by the time they finish, it will be, you know, five years later or something. I think that issue can be addressed back then, but definitely from now until then, we need to plan out where and how we provide those information, I mean, the location of the housing.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. And Raj?
Yeah, so I think we should follow the general plan when possible and actually stick to it, but Apple, this is a great, great news to our city and our community that they want to expand. I think we should enable retail as well to supplement Apple and make sure that their employees have good places to eat and shop. As far as housing, I agree with Chris Wang. I think she's got the right idea on this and I fully support what she's saying.
Thank you, Raj. The next question, and I'm gonna start with Barry on this. Next question has to do with traffic. "Do you believe that we have traffic problems around our schools, and if so, do you have any solutions?" Barry?
Yes, we do have traffic problem around our schools, and that's one of the second items. I mentioned I would reduce traffic around our schools, and I know there's many other candidates mentioned about reduce traffic around school, but I was the only candidate show up at the City Council meeting, last meeting, October 3rd here, for item number 17, which is relieve of the traffic around Cupertino, Montevista, Kennedy, and Lincoln area with the shuttle bus, which Mayor Wang proposed was a very good idea, you know, and then we went through it. So yes, we do have a problem with the traffic around our school. We got to solve that problem because I live in that area, Bubrow area. If you get into the traffic time, school time, sometimes you're stuck there for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, easily, and that's not good for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Barry. Mark?
I think anyone who lives in Cupertino knows we have a traffic problem around the schools a couple times a day, and it's contrary to popular belief. It's not just around Montevista, it's a citywide problem wherever the schools are. So I favor solutions that address the whole city, not just one individual school, and I think we do need something, to do something about it, and it kind of concerns me when the city says it's the school's problem, the school says the city's problem, or maybe it's VTA problem. It's all of our problems, and passing the buck doesn't solve it. People shouldn't be sitting for half an hour in the morning, you know, right in front of the school and not able to move. I think there's a lot of things we can do to alleviate the problem. We can adjust traffic patterns to alleviate the problem, potentially, as I said earlier, maybe have someone patrol areas certainly occasionally to make sure that those are dealt with. One neighbor suggested one-way traffic around certain areas, which may help. We can certainly look at maybe expanding some areas where people can get off the street. We can do simpler things like encouraging people to walk and making safe walking paths so students can walk or bike to school to get less cars off the road, and also do something to encourage carpooling, maybe give a place for a carpool to get off and get out of the traffic more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert?
About a year ago at Montevista, I was doing the, I was serving as the suicide council there, and I recommended doing a kind of like a school bus loop to relieve the recollection and the Tri Valley school corridor. the recollection and the, and the Tri, Tri, Tri Valley school corridor. I guess that, that took a while to catch on as far as the, the possibility of that happening, so. But I, I feel good about that happening. And I also going to, I'm, I, I went out to the Blackberry Farm, the situation on the, on the trail that they're all fenced in right, right now, that, that, that's a, that part of the problem that got to be resolved. We've got to, we've got to be able to open up that trail, so also allow the kids bike to school or walk to school right through that trail. The city own that, own that park, that, that section of it, we, we need to, we need to work with the, with the, with the, with the neighbors there to, to develop that area. That area is wasted right now. It's like, that, that's a dangerous area right now. The tree is falling, the, the fence is cut, the, the bridge is, is ready to fall. That had, that, that had to be solved. That, you know, that, that should be the council, you know, putting high priorities there.
Another solution I forgot to mention is have our sheriff give more traffic ticket during that times when there violation there.
Okay. Thank you. I have, no more tickets? Okay. So I have two, two questions, and the first three candidates, I'll be asking a retail question, and the second three candidates, I'll be asking environmental question. So the first question for Gilbert and Chris and Raj is, what would you do to make Cupertino Square more successful? And Chris, I'll start with you, followed by Gilbert, and then Raj.
Well, I guess everybody already heard, or you have not heard, that I'll share, share with you that the Cupertino Square have just changed the ownership. They now not just one single owner, but divided in two. So the housing, the Rose Bowl, and then also this two parcel close to 280, all three of them, it's like 11 acre or something, was bought by one owner, and then the rest mall was the other. We are, the city are working closely with the new owner to learn what the, the plan, but so far, I think we're still, have not heard differently, and there is still the plan to build the two restaurants and the Sears, and then the food courts, and the, the mall inside the mall. And we're glad to see the old owner at least that delivered the theater and also the strike. So we need to give them some time. I really believe that people, I know we're desperate to see it. However, if we, we review the history, this mall was built in, in 70s, and that was kind of successful at the very first few years. And then that, when that went to the teacher reserve foundation or retire foundation, it wasn't really actively managed it. So the new owner have just added them for five years. So I have to give them some credit. But with the new owner, let's work with them, and I believe the, the, the plan they have so far will really turn around and bring a lot of businesses in and the sales tax, and there, you know, will be our, not just the city, but regional mall for city to generate more sales tax, and we're looking forward to work with them.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Gilbert?
Thank you very much. Just like Mayor Wang said, that Alan Wong and Emily Chan have sold the mall to two different owners. And I just want to give credit to Alan Wong for, for bringing in AMC Theaters, a theater that we didn't think we could have. We don't have to drive outside Cupertino. We can actually watch the movie theaters here in Cupertino. With those movie theaters, that's the economic engine to bring retail into Cupertino, into Cupertino Square. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going, probably going to take about a year to 18 months. Other success stories that Mr. Wong brought in was also he brought in Strike Cupertino, a very nice 16 bowling alleys and arcade, something that we should be proud of. With that, we should also collaborate with the city, with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, and our general manager, Mike Brody, with Valco Fashion Park Mall, to see how we can work together to bring more retail. And as you know, Cupertino is highlight itself because of our schools, highlights itself because we have companies like Hewlett-Packard and Apple Computer, and we have a very well economic status here that can provide the retail here. So we need to work together with these three entities and collaborate to bring it together. The other thing is that the three R properties have been sold to Evershine Group, and we need to work together with the Evershine Group to see how we can get the Rose Bowl project up and going and build a Secana Road type corridor along Valco Parkway. It may not be housing, because I'm concerned about putting housing there, but what I want to see is a lifestyle center, meaning let's bring a bookstore into Cupertino, let's bring an office store. And lastly, that, let's have some good restaurants, let's have some good stores and a place to gather.
Okay. Thank you, Gilbert. Raj?
So I think we should be very proactive as a city council in this. It's, it's a private property interest, but certainly I think it benefits the entire city. So I think we should identify the kinds of anchor tenants that we'd like to see, also a bookstore, a pharmacy, more restaurants, and take those anchor tenants and proactively as a city council, go to them. I, I'd be happy to, to volunteer, to, to, to reach out to the kinds of businesses we want to attract and tell them why Cupertino is a great place to have another, another store, and make an economic case of why that will work, and get the neighbors involved as well, and make the case to the landlord along with the, the, the potential tenant of what tenant improvements might be feasible to make that accommodated. So I think as a city council, we have to be proactive in getting the kinds of businesses that we want at Valco, because it is a center point of our city, and it can really drive a lot of tax revenues, focus on the kinds of businesses that will bring tax revenues. AMC and, and Strike are great, but there are other types of businesses that can bring more tax revenues to the city. So we should proactively.
Thank you, Raj. Perfect. Next question I'm going to address to Albert, Mark, and Barry, and it's an environmental question. As you know, the city of San Jose recently announced it was going green in a big way. You have any environmental initiatives that you would be introducing for Cupertino? Albert?
I, I would support the, the installation of solar, solar energy, solar panels on, on just about any, any office building there, you know, that can, that can afford to do that or wants to do that. I think the tax situation could be worked out between the city and, and the, and the office building owners. So I, I do support the solar, the use of solar energy. I also think a little bit outside the box as far as introducing, maybe, we need, we need to build more, more cleaner energy productions, such as maybe even nuclear energy. So I, I, I do fall in that category as being, that's, that's the, that's, that's the direction that they, if you want to look at, look into the future, you know, we need, we need a clean energy resource. We cannot, you know, we cannot, you know, obviously, we cannot survive like depending on the fossil fuel.
Okay. Thank you, Albert. Mark?
Thank you. We actually asked this question the last debate. I guess my answer is pretty much the same. For all the, the nerds in the city, I would recommend looking at this month's IEEE Spectrum. There's an article on one of our own, David Canita, who's on the Planning Commission, who has built a efficient building, unfortunately, since San Jose, not in Cupertino, but I think that's a interesting reading about, learning about a few things. There's obvious things like incentives for solar for homes. Hopefully, we keep them so they don't look bad. There are LED lights that we can switch throughout the city, which, which would be a big win. One large win we can do is simply addressing, as we talked earlier, the school traffic problem. We burn a lot of fuel, whether you're burning a, whether you're in an SUV or a small car, even an electric car is using juice that had to be manufactured some way. And so if you're sitting for a half an hour with your engine idling outside of school, you're burning a lot of energy, and so I think we should definitely look at, look at that issue.
Thank you, Mark. Barry, you get to do the wrap-up on that?
I'm for the environment, environmental protection. I love trees, I plant trees. For the city, what we need to do is reduce the fee for the green building when people apply, because my understanding, our fee is higher than other cities, so we've got to reduce that. Also, second thing is, when the next buying for the vehicle, buy the hybrid for the city and encourage resident to, to buy hybrid. I bought one also for my daughter, so. So that, that, that's the way to go. And then the plant more trees, okay? I like tree, I love tree. I fought for that old tree in Eaton School, you know, there's a old tree, big old tree, 200 years there, and then because of school renovation, but I fought so hard, it got cut down. I feel sorry for that old tree, really. I love trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Well, the good news is I have enough questions to go for another hour. Bad news is I've got about four and a half minutes. So at this point in time, I think we're going to have to look for a closing statement from each candidate, so if you would be brief and let us know why we should be voting for you. Gilbert, we'll start with you, and we'll work our way down the aisle.
I want to say thank you to Cupertino Courier for having this forum today. I'm very proud this morning, pick up the Cupertino Courier this morning and have the endorsement of the Cupertino Courier. Also, I have the endorsement of Congressman Mike Honda, the three current city council members, and seven former mayors. I think based on my leadership, my experience, and my commitment, five years on the Cupertino Planning Commission, four years on the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, two years on the West Valley School Site Council, that has given me the, the know-how, that I don't need any on-the-job training, that since, when I go onto council, I can go hit and, and running. I'll be humble and honored to have your vote on November 6th. Please check out my website at www.gilbertwang.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. Chris?
I do wanted to appreciate everybody to come, and I think a great turnout today, and also the great turnout Monday, the foreign, Monday. That shows everybody's very care about this election, and I want to encourage everybody, the citizens don't usually have it right, even though we hold the public hearing, however, you don't have a decision-making power until, you know, only the people sit it up here. So this is the only opportunity that you vote, you vote and whoever that you believe that can represent you. It is so important, cast your vote, but you got to learn each one of them, knowing that they really, it's your sole representative. Also, be careful with it. I'm not trying to debating, but the, when we were talking about the, the Velco or the, how would be proactive, you know, everything that we said here, be careful with dollar amount, because the city is not really that, you know, bigger city and that much of the budget. If we wanted to be proactive to bring any of the anchor stores, and you know, they, they've done that. I mean, you don't know how much the TI cost, the tenant improvement cost. I know my, my, my city staff or my colleagues and current colleagues, former colleagues also agree with me that we tried everything. So just be careful with that. It's, it's not everything that we, you know, people deliver the blank check that can be delivered. Those are important thing. And the end that I wanted to mention that, the one question that I answered Monday wasn't clear, and that's, it's about the, the contribution versus the bias and related to, and so and so. I want to make it clear now that I do get a lot of contributions, and probably the highest amounts, the, the candidates, however, I'm not the, the record holders, I know I'm far from that. However, I treat every daughters preciously, and, and, and the daughter, the contribution is from 20 to a few thousand dollars here and there, from my friends, from my supporters, from businesses, from the endorsers, from everything. And I, I appreciated all that, but not going in for, in for me any decision whatsoever. And I want to make clear that the accurate information is on the website. We have very good systems that everybody filed a form, and that declare whatever the contribution they receive from everybody. I want to take this opportunity for the supporters, the endorsers, everybody supported me and, and contributed your, your support. I treat them as, as trust, as a support, and, and as a recognition of the four years that I have served for you. And I'm looking forward to work with you again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Raj, your final statement?
Yeah, so thanks to the thousands of people that voted for me last time, and the ones that didn't, I, I ask you to reconsider, and I have learned, and I've grown, and I've made mistakes, and, and I'm a better person for it. I'm fully independent, I'm passionate about the city, I'm a dedicated community volunteer. I can make a difference if you give me a chance. And I am really a fully independent candidate that can take this city forward. I have the vision, I have the skills, and I have the leadership abilities to, to make that happen. So ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Raj. Barry?
Raj just said he grown up in two years. Thank you again. If you agree with me that we should not approve any more condo project until we find a solution for our school overcrowded condition and traffic congestion, please vote for me to change the current direction led by our planning commission and city council. Andrew Carnegie once said, "As I grow older, I pay less attention to what men say, I just watch what they do." If you agree with Andrew Carnegie, please vote for me, because I have a proven record of action and accomplishment. If it, if that it, I will again expand the library's hours, reduce traffic around our school, expand July 4th celebration, and provide more services to our seniors. For more detail, please visit my website, barrychan.com. People often ask me, "What is your chance to win?" My answer is, if you all vote for me, my chance will be 100%. I'll be honored to serve you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Mark?
When I first decided to run, I thought about what the important issues were in the city, and I concluded there was one overriding important issue. And that is, in the United States, we're supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, and most importantly, for the people. I think we need to do a better job on the for the people part, and it comes from both sides. I'm very happy to see a large number of people here, and I kind of gave some people a hard time at the League of Women's Voters, but I was very pleased to see that a lot of people watched it on TV, because I got a lot of emails from, from various people. So I want to thank everyone who watches this on TV, and especially everyone who comes here and asks questions for coming and participating in our government. If you don't participate and learn about the candidates and you don't vote, then you really don't have a place in government. If you do, then you all do, and that makes for a better government. There's some fine people up here. I'm glad you all had the opportunity to hear what we all think, and now you can vote for who you believe is the right candidate. I'd just like to say in closing that I'm happy to see I've already had an influence on the, on the election. The first statement I used, for the people. I've now heard several other candidates make that, and I'm glad to see that the other candidates also believe that they should be working for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And Albert, you get to do the final honors.
I think, I think everyone should vote for me, because I am a conservative individual. I pride myself on dealing with honesty and trust, whoever I deal with. I always do the research, I always do the investigation before I make, make, make my decisions. I pride myself of getting things done. Closure is my, is my game. I worked in the aerospace industry, closure is, is the key. I work in the safety area, I work in the reliability area. And if I'm on the council, you know, I, I would deal with the problems with the closure. I, I do not have any, you know, bias either, either direction. I, I look at the facts and deal, deal with it. So please vote for me. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'd like to thank everybody in the audience for being here today. Thank you for your support. Please remind all your friends, your family, to get out there and vote. Your vote makes a difference. And it takes a lot of commitment, it takes a lot of courage to run for public office, and I'd like to ask you to join me in thanking these candidates for putting themselves forward. Thank you very much. That ends our forum. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.